Good afternoon, a good Friday afternoon at four o'clock. I'm sure tons and tons of you are gonna jump on. I I I'm kidding with the weather as nice as is, I probably wouldn't go out and watch myself. Um, so uh, for those of you guys watching down the road, I'm gonna start a timer here in just a second. Um, go ahead and skip on uh, as usual, we've got another candidate in the uh, in the seat. Thank you for joining me, uh, Mr. Overstreet. Um, we'll uh, we'll dive in, talk through uh, the topics. Appreciate you filling out the questions and and answers. Uh, there was actually one, one thing in there that I want to make sure that I learned more about. You mentioned something about land assessments with the the business development and all that kind of stuff. So don't let me forget to ask you that when we get to, you know, we we get to all of that. Cause that's something um, I I'm I'm interested in. Um, so guys, let me start that timer. And we'll get rolling, but uh, yeah, hot Diane, um, can you hear me? That's the number one question and can you hear him? Are you uh, you having a good day?
Having a good day.
Are you, you gonna hang around for First Friday?
We're gonna be around. We're gonna be around.
Um, yeah, we uh, when, when you, you schedule it for uh, today. And then I think uh, I think it was about yesterday that as they're setting up all the cones and all that kind of stuff. I said, alright, well, this ought to be interesting. Um, so I know it can be a little bear getting in here to to Knowles and Sullivan, but uh,
I actually was very fortunate, I found a spot immediately, so I left out.
Alright, well, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping, and if you guys are watching this when we get done, um, then uh, head on down here to uh, downtown Gadsden and enjoy. Um, the uh, the weather's pretty beautiful out there. So um, although uh, as we were just discussing pollen, um, that's the downside of this weather, so.
That's definitely the downside and and I I told Mr. Wyman a moment ago, y'all have to indulge me as we go through this uh, time. Uh, if I have to take a sip of water, please excuse me, but uh, my, I'm, I'm suffering from allergies that I've never suffered from before. So this is a new thing for me.
Oof, well, uh, so for those of you that are used to the allergies, um, maybe uh, drop some suggestions in the comments. But uh, yeah, that's uh, I'm, I'm starting to feel it, so. Um, but guys, let me know, how are you guys doing um, on this uh, this wonderful Friday? If you've got questions, uh, you can drop them in there. Uh, if you've seen any of these previously, then you kind of know that the format, uh, you know, don't take offense if I don't jump on your question. Um, but uh, we'll, we'll uh, we'll do the best we can, just kind of having a discussion. Um, about uh, who you are and what your, your, your background is and what you're thinking about for the future of our county. Um, and uh, so I I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I know, I mean, especially looking at your background, um, you're, you're not, I guess I'd say you're not new to this. And you've got a, a good depth of knowledge, um, that uh, you know, I'm, I'm anxious to learn some, some things from, so.
Thank you.
Um, alright, sound is good, sound is good, awesome guys. Um, hit that share button if you don't mind, um, and tag a friend. Uh, or maybe tag an enemy that you think should be listening uh, to what uh, what we're gonna talk about. But uh, um, so the questions we have gotten most, um, well, we got a, a huge chunk of the candidates have all submitted answers to the questions. Again, thank you for, for doing that, indulging us, I know it's, it's kind of a little, little weird and a little different. Um, but uh, so that, most of the, most of that info is getting live. Um, I was a little delayed, I had some work I had to do this morning. Um, but I think I've gotten the majority of the stuff out there, uh, so you guys can start jumping on. Go to advancededawal.com, go to election twenty-two under that tab, you can see who's, who's running. Click on that and it'll take you right to all the candidate profiles. Um, and the best thing is, it's easy, cause everybody's giving me their website pages, their Facebook profile, LinkedIn profile, any of that stuff that they've got. And you know, their digital presence, trying to make it easy for you to get out and find them. Um, and of course, uh, they've got bios and and all that kind of stuff, so do the research. Um, cause ultimately, that's what's gonna really change things in our community is a uh, better educated voter. Uh, more knowledgeable voter to understand more of the issues and uh, make, make what they think are the best choices for the future of their community. Alright, well, guys, let's jump in here. Again, if you've got questions, um, drop them in the uh, drop them in the comments and uh, we'll do it. Otherwise, we're gonna get started here. Um, alright, so, welcome, uh, Jeff Overstreet, running for county commissioner. Um, you, you've got some previous uh, experience on the county commission, again, as I mentioned uh, just a, a second ago. Um, so uh, you know, I hope folks will listen and um, you know, go read uh, you, the, the answers that, that he put forth on, on the website. Um, you know, there's, there's a good depth of knowledge, um, you know, whether, I, I'd say whether you, you, you're, you're a supporter of his or not. Um, there's no argument that there's some information you can learn. Um, and I hope that's true, you know, really of all the candidates that are, that are coming out. Um, but certainly those that have served previously, um, you know, there's a lot more context of things that people can learn. Um, so we'll get into that, I'm gonna let you brag on yourself some, um, and and not uh, not sit here and do it. But if you could just give me just kind of a quick, um, you know, not necessarily the political side of, of things, but who is, who is Jeff Overstreet? Uh, just so everybody's kind of got a little context as, as we, we dive into the, the political discussion.
Sure, sure. Well, I'm no stranger to the community, people know who I am. I've been um, in uh, the wholesale distributor business for approximately thirty years, twenty-five to thirty years. Um, I've been an actual, an actual distributor for over twenty-five years. Okay. And so uh, I've been known well on around the community, people know who I am, people know my face and they know, they know me as uh, as the, the guy on the, guy at the grocery store. That's how they, that's how they know me as, and so they, they see me out in that place and that's, that's uh, that's who I am. Um, I am married to Frieda Jester Overstreet, uh, her father was a builder that was in uh, in Rainbow City and was there for several years. I have three beautiful daughters that I'm very proud of that have uh, all been very, very successful in their, in their lives and their careers. I'm very proud of all three of them.
Girl dad.
Yes, all, all three daughters, three daughters. So, so yeah, they're, but they're great, but um, we um, my wife and I own Southern House of Flowers, that's another, give a plug in for that. That's another, that's another business that we own, uh, we've been in there over, over twenty years and uh, they, they run that, my wife and my oldest daughter run that and do a wonderful job. And taking care of the community uh, for the, for your floral needs. And um, biggest thing with me is, um, I got involved politically around two thousand and four. And uh, got involved with Rainbow City Council and moved up from, from there to the Edgewall County Commission and served on the county commission for twelve years. And um, I was first exposed to, funny as it sounds, I was first exposed to the Republican Party in the, as, as it really began its inception of growing back in the early eighties. When Ronald Reagan was, was president and I had an opportunity to go to Atlanta and hear him speak. And that kind of gave me a uh, a, an in-depth knowledge and a curiosity about what, about what politics was all about and really what it was. And even though I was very involved, I didn't really get involved from a political standpoint until all my children were raised. I, I, I raised a family, took care of my children and uh, we, my wife and I did the, did, did, did the parent thing. And then, and then after, and then after the kids got, got to a certain age and we decided to, to launch that into, into the political world and, and then do that, so uh. But I served twelve years on the county commission and um, have been very proud of the accomplishments that we've been able to do. And, and uh, of course, we're back running again and hopefully, uh, folks, if you see uh, a desire or a, a want to, to, to vote, then we, we ask for your vote. And uh, we will be running without a paycheck this year, uh, this term.
Okay.
We'll be using that paycheck to go back into the uh, into the knees of District Four. Uh, we'll be taking that, we, we, we will be getting the paycheck from the county commission and using that check to go back into District Four. I, if, if I did, if I didn't take a salary, the salary would go back into the general fund. And then it would, the District Four would get the benefits off of it, we won't, District Four get the benefit off that money, so we're gonna take it, we're gonna turn it into District Four.
Alright.
So that's, that's a, that's our plan.
Alright, um, okay, so let's um, and, and I know uh, you know, now we've got a couple of these down. Um, hopefully everybody kind of understands, this is, I, you know, I don't want this to be uh, an hour-long rendering conversation. Um, but just to give everybody context, that was part of the discussion and you, you mentioned the floral shop, which I think is a good segue into uh, kind of um, where, where you were, um, where your head was and, and uh, where your heart was, uh, when the whole rendering thing started out. So if you should give a, a quick, um, you know, what, what was your, your involvement? Um, and, and I'm saying the, the flower shop, cause it's, it's right down the street.
Sure.
So, um, so what, what were, you know, where, what have you been, what have you been involved with, with, with the rendering plant?
Sure, well, we were involved with the rendering plant from day one, from the, from the, the meeting at the nine-one-one building with the G A A in November twenty twenty, straight on through. We, we were there for the uh, the A M meeting at the Pittman, or, or at the, at the SAC and then the coincide meeting at the Pittman, we were at Southside Auditorium. We were at the forum at the venue, we had been at the city council meetings, we, we have, we have plugged in and been involved. Actually, the, the, the original pack, Render It Useless, was headquartered out of our flower shop, out of three ninety-six Steel Station Road. And the flower shop that we own is uh, just um, just a couple of miles down from where the proposed site was for the rendering plant. And then by the way, the crow flies, my home is about probably three miles over the ridge. And so uh, we would have been deeply affected by, by the uh, by the uh, odor and, and the coinciding issues that deal with that, so.
Okay.
So yeah, but, but we, but, but we've been, we've been there from day one and, and, and fighting alongside and uh, and just, just doing, doing what, uh, doing what we felt like was best for the community.
Alright, um, well, so, and if you want, you know, more, more detail on that, uh, I know you, you've got all that, that stuff listed uh, again on uh, in the questions on, on our, our website and of course, um, you know, yes, uh, you know, as an A E guy. Uh, it's one of the things that uh, we'll, we'll weigh in on, on some of these answers or some of these uh, um, we, we can definitely attest that, that you've been right there in, in the middle of everything, um, as uh, as we've been in, in the middle of it with you. So um, uh, yeah, what a remarkable, have you seen other stuff like the rendering plant in the time you've been around this community?
Never seen anything like it before. Never, never, never seen anything like it before. I, I don't know that we have ever had the community galvanize against an issue. Maybe, maybe one other issue that I, I, I won't elaborate on, but maybe one other issue back in the early seventies that the community galvanized on. But beyond that, I don't know that we've ever seen that, seen that beyond, beyond this.
Well, I hope that uh, you know, I hope that that issue is something that uh, quite frankly, has scared all of us enough to maintain enough attention, um, and uh, to, to pay more attention and get smarter and more educated on uh, who we're voting for. Just again, why I'm, I'm doing all of this, uh, to try and make it easy. Um, I know it's, it can be tough to stay plugged in, um, as a girl dad myself. Um, you know, running off to, to soccer uh, next weekend or uh, tomorrow and uh, doing all that kind of stuff. So um, people have been busy, but uh, hopefully the rendering plant has kind of showed us that we probably need to carve enough time in to uh, to, to pay attention to who we're putting into place. And uh, the decisions that are being made and making sure that we as a community are, are, uh, as I've said more, you know, over and over, that we're all, we're offering the ultimate leadership for the community in telling our elected officials what it is that we, we want to do.
That's true, and, and I, and I really believe that if you're not, if you're not an attentive, and I think this is what this has done, this has made everybody attentive. If you don't, if you don't get your radar up and keep it up, things can happen a lot of times and you not realize what's taking place until after it's done.
Right, and so I will, uh, I'll finish off that, the, the rendering plant thought with, with, I think, uh, you fall into the category of one of those people that um, is certainly uh, obliques, um, and, and more than acceptable to say, welcome to the fight. Um, you know, I know you've been, you've been dealing with a lot of this through, um, through many years now. Um, and there's a lot of guys like me that are, that are kind of, we, we've shown up. Um, and I'll at least say, and just so everybody knows, I just met you in person, um, the uh, the other day. Obviously, I've, I've known through, through Christie and um, all the other contacts, um, heard your name a lot and, and, and no, no more. But uh, um, you know, as a guy that I guess hasn't been paying enough attention, um, you know, I, I appreciate that you, you seem to be the type that's like, well, now that you're paying attention, let's talk about, let's talk about what's going on and uh, you know, not waste time, uh, getting mad at me because I haven't been paying enough attention, so.
Sure.
Um, we'll, we'll uh, take that for what it's worth. Um, that's uh, that's a plus in my book, um, cause we've, we've seen different reactions from different folks uh, through this last year. And it's, it's been frustrating, so. So speaking of that, um, I think that's a good segue into, to leadership. Um, you know, uh, one of the things certainly, um, that, now I mentioned the leadership of the people. We, we, we've talked a lot about having kind of elected officials around here who, who tend to be just that, elected officials and aren't necessarily leaders. Um, so uh, you know, that's, that's one of the things that we've, you know, we really feel like is, is so critical, which none of the stuff we've come up with is rocket science. I mean, it's, it's not, you know, hey, we've, we've uncovered the secret to, you know, how a community should run. Um, obviously, we need good leadership, so what, what are your, what, when, you know, what, what do you say to um, what, what do you, what do you feel qualifies you to be a good leader? Um, to be someone that, that we should say, yep, this is a guy that we need to put in place to, to follow, um, and, and to, to lead our community?
Sure, well, just to follow up on what you just said, you're right, it's not rocket science, a lot of it's just common sense. It really is, and you know, it's, it's like, you know, what, what do you, what do you really want for yourself and for your family and for your children and for their future? I think, I think we just, we, we need, we need to be always focused on, on uh, on our, on the future. And, and the future is our children and uh, and our grandchildren, that's, that's who, that's who it is. And we always need to be focused on making sure that we're doing things that are going to make life better for them. Maybe not necessarily easier, maybe not necessarily more, more, more privileged, but make it, make it better. Give, give them the opportunities that, that we had, or maybe even that we didn't have, open those opportunities up and make those happen. As far as my leadership, um, like I said before, and we'll just, I'll just touch back on that again, I was on the county commission for twelve years from two thousand six, two thousand eighteen. I was on the Rainbow City Council prior to that, I was police and fire commissioner, served uh, in, in those, that capacity. And um, as far as uh, having ideas about leadership and things of that nature, when I came into uh, Edgewall County of the commission, we really were, were struggling financially about trying to make sure that we, that we had um, funding to do what we needed to do and, and run things the way we needed to run. So our commission, that, and I was proud to be a part of that, that worked together to take our budgets and realign our budgets. When I say realign, I'm not necessarily talking about change them, I'm just talking about getting them under control. And, and lining everything up where we're able to put money in the bank. And, and when we got, when we got the funding put in the bank and we were able to start saving some money, then we had the idea, you know, we don't have a countywide industrial site. Let's, let's look, let's look at doing a countywide industrial site. And I'm, I am proud to say that I was one of the founding members, uh, and, and begin to, began the mega site, the, the purchase of the mega site property and finished it. And the mega site property is today where it is, um, because of the commissions. And I was proud to be part of that from the very beginning all the way through.
Gotcha.
And uh, so, so uh, from a vision standpoint, yes, well, um, I, I do, I do share that, do share that vision to try, to try to make something great for our community. Cause we want our community to have the opportunity to grow and, and uh, we need something that we can bring in large quantities of jobs. And, and, and this, this gave us an opportunity to do that. Um, we've had some opportunities when I was on the commission to do some things on the mega site and more from an industrial standpoint. But we, but we made the decision, this is something we want to do, a large-scale industry, and we want to try to make that work. And uh, so, um, and let, let me just say, for those of you maybe that are out there, might be scheduled by the mega site. I might say, well, you know, it's been there for years, nothing's been done. Most of these sites don't see any activity for fifteen to twenty years, from the time they are in, in, incepted, incepted until the time that they actually happened. So, uh, but, but we, we do have the attention of the state, we did get an advanced site certification, which I was a key player in making that happen. I went to Birmingham on two different occasions and uh, met with the uh, advanced site team for Montgomery. And um, we were able to make the, get the advanced site status certification for the plant or for the um, for the uh, mega site, to bring a plant there of some type. And um, and so that, that's something we're proud of. Um, I am an advanced graduate of the um, uh, local government institute of the Alvin University. I was able to complete that while I was there and, and um, from a leadership standpoint, I've always been involved at the state level, not just at the local level. I was served on the insurance board for the, the state county insurance board for uh, almost ten years. And so, so I've, so I've, I've, I'm, I'm plugged in well in Washington, I'm plugged in well in Montgomery. Um, we have been able to bring grants back, um, several hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants, we got twenty million dollars in grants and um, and bridge funding. District Four got the most of that money, so we were, we were proud for that and able to get that done. Uh, we were able to, to do bond, do roads, so, and we've always been, I've always been part that's been forward-thinking and then, and I can share, you know, we don't have time for the examples that I can share. And, and that forward-thinking mindset, but, but we've always tried to be forward-thinking in what we did as a commission and I've always done that as, even as an individual.
Okay.
So that's a, from a leadership qualification, that's what I feel like I've got to offer.
Gotcha, gotcha, alright, well, so we're uh, the, the mega site and, and particularly, I think your insight from, from going back to the beginning of that. Um, the perspective of the very nature of the structure of our, of our government. Um, you know, uh, one of the things that, that I have said, um, you know, from the very beginning of this and, and we, has been talked a lot about is, um, you know, asking the question, is, is our, is our countywide government even structured in such a way to really allow us to succeed to begin with? Um, you know, and, and I think, and the reason I mentioned the mega site is, is, you know, clearly, and, and I'm, I'm gonna spell out exactly what I'm thinking. You got the mega site that's, that's a county thing and literally right across the street is an airport. And that airport has no influence based on government structure, um, from the county. It's solely reliant on being able, and I would think that, that those two things being within proximity of each other. Um, and we'll get into some, you know, some business uh, friendliness and business environment. But um, I, I don't think there's much argument that, that the businesses that are gonna wanna go to the mega site are probably also gonna be somewhat interested in the, the resource that we have as an airport out there. So I use that as an example to, to get into what are kind of your thoughts on um, the existing structures of, of our, um, of our county? Um, and, and I know, I realize this is probably a topic that we could unpack and, you know, talk for several hours about. But uh, you know, um, cause there's, there's a lot, you know, um, I, we've had a lot of talk about that this last year. But what are your, what are your thoughts on, on kind of where we, where we sit? Um, you know, uh, I guess I'd say near, near term and then, and then maybe some long-term thoughts on, on, on what, what needs. Or maybe, maybe you say, everything's hunky-dory and it's all good.
Okay, um, we've got probably ten, eleven municipalities in this county. Geographically, we're the smallest county in the state. So we have some, some small communities and uh, and, and townships and municipalities and, and to to look at the situation like it is now, everybody has, how can I say this, I don't wanna offend, but everybody has their own little world.
Yeah.
And, and, and I, I don't, I don't mean that to be, to be offensive, but everybody has their own world and they want, and they, and, and they want to protect their own world and they want to run their own.
And I'll, I'll, I'll take the heat for what you're getting at, um, because I'm, I have no problem, cause I don't need votes. Um, I, I have no problem in, in saying, um, I mean, it is what it is, right? So you know, in, in, and I, and I, you're getting at everybody's, we've got all these little, little mindsets. And you know, one of the things that we've heard about routinely, um, from the advanced ed wall side of things is, you know, why are people from Rainbow City? Why should they have anything to say with what's going on in the city of Gadsden? And I've said point blank, that's, that's one of the dumbest concepts that, that I, I can think of, you don't have to agree with that. Um, you know, but uh, that, that is, um, yeah, so it is where it is right now, um, we have what we have to deal with.
Right.
You know, and so we can't, we can't change that and hopefully nobody gets their feelings hurt, like, I mean, it just, it is what it is, so.
Well, the, the, the only way it can be changed is, and, and again, I'm not trying to offend, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to be, just trying to be honest.
Right.
The only way you can do it is you got, you, you've got to get the leadership together. And people have got to just check themselves at the door and say, we're gonna sit down and we're gonna talk about this. Let, let, let me give you an example of, of, of how I know that community working together countywide can work.
Okay.
Back in two thousand and three, when I was on the Rainbow City Council. I, I right before I was on the Rainbow City Council, the talks began to surface about a um, drug task force for the county.
Okay.
I came on the council in two thousand and four and was in the process, that was in the process of taking place. I was able to see it in the inception and then I moved to the county and was able to actually see it put together and work. And now here it is fifteen years later, sixteen years later, eighteen years later, the county drug task force is still working, it still works. So, so to say that we can't get together as a, as a county and different communities and work, we've already proven that we can do it. So, so, so we, we, and, and I, I shared with you the other day, if, if it's nothing more than a countywide garbage pickup. We, there, there's something we can do as a, as, as a group together and pull together. Um, we had discussions in the past, um, me and a, a certain citizen, prominent citizen here in, in Edgewall County back when I was on the commission about, about um, police, policing and um, about maybe, you know, doing a shared services between city and county police force at day shift, night shift type situation. Um, and it was, and it was just a conversation, but it's probably a conversation that needs to be had. Uh, and it's, and, and, and we're not trying to exclude anybody, it's just the fact that with the budgetary constraints that are placed on these community, communities now to be able to operate, we need to figure out every possible way we can to reduce duplication of services. So, so from that standpoint, um, I would like to see myself personally, us trying to come up with some ways that we can work together, reduce duplication of services and, and, and be, and be a, be a community that works as a team. Okay, so that's, that's, that's what I'd like to see happen.
Yeah, um, and, and uh, I, I guess I'm gonna, cause I can, I can hear, I can hear somebody saying in the, in, in the comments, um, you know, down, down the road, that it, it sounds like you're, you're asking for more power as a county commissioner. And um, I wanna make sure, just to clarify, that, that's not what you're, you're suggesting.
No, I'm not suggesting, I don't think, I don't really think the county needs to be the person that runs the show. We're not, we don't need to be the big dog, uh, you know, I, I don't think the county needs to do that. I think you need to put together a board to where you would have, um, with maybe, maybe no more than probably eight people. You would, you would rotate your municipalities through, you would have a, you, you would have a, a commissioner that would rotate through and, and, and keep fresh ideas. Don't, don't put somebody on there and just leave them, keep fresh ideas coming all the time and, and sit down and have, have the discussion and be, and be open about it and, and, and be, and be wise to it.
Alright, well, with, with that, cause I think that uh, um, we're gonna skip down and, and talk master plan. And I saw uh, Danny Starnes ask about um, thoughts on, on the master plan, um, countywide. Um, and I think we were kind of already going down that, that path of, of discussing that. And what are your thoughts on, on, um, you know, you know, you, you've, you've stated that you think that's, that's something that you'd be on board with. And, and what are your thoughts and perspective, particularly pulling on your experience in Rainbow City and the, the being on the county commission previously? What are your thoughts on, on logistically, how do, how do we pull off a, a master plan of, of some kind?
Well, I go, I go back to, I'll just go ahead and just, just elaborate on what I said just a minute ago, I'm putting it together, putting together a board, eight, no more than probably ten people. Putting, that, that would give you enough seats at the table to put a good um, helping of your communities, your municipalities on, on there. Rotate those off every couple of years to where you'd always have city and you always have s- uh, community involvement and community representation. Make sure the county has a seat at the table, make sure that Gadsden has a seat at the table and, and you, and, and I, and I understand some people may say, well, Gadsden, you know, is their own, is their own entity, their own thing. But they also are county seat, so, so, so they, they need a seat at the table, but, but they need a seat at the table with, with an open mind.
Right.
And, and so that, that was be the thing we would have to do and make sure that everybody stays open-minded about it. And um, and really, this is not going to be something we're gonna see overnight, this, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to put elected officials in place that have got this mindset to move this forward. Now, as far as putting together an actual master plan for the county, um, I mean, you could do that in several different areas. I mean, we talked about law enforcement just a moment ago, um, sewage could, could be another one, sewage and drainage, uh, um, Um, sewage could, could be another one, sewage and drainage, uh, um, right, right, right where, right where, um, years ago. But I, I, I'll, I'll just touch on this and elaborate on this. Took years ago where a tile sewer was and before they got their sewer fixed, they, they were running through some, uh, some difficulties with their sewer. Rainbow City had not built their sewage plants yet. They just had a small plant. They didn't have the, the, the great facility they've got now. And then the Black Creek Parkway facility that was, is for City of Gadsden, uh, at the interstate at seven fifty-nine. Those actually sewers, I, I, I talked to the mayor in Rainbow City about, I said, why don't we just put some forced mains in? We can force Rainbow City sewage to the Black Creek facility. We can force a tile sewage which comes close to there to the Black Creek facility. And you can take and you can do final treatment there and work out a sharing, um, package for, for a tile and Rainbow City and Gadsden to where you can keep your sewage rates at a decent level and everybody put in and, and do. That's the kind of forward thinking we need, uh, and, 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 and again, it was, that was just talk. But that's the kind of forward thinking. We, we, we always need to be looking at maybe doing a different, something different and something, uh, something new, something fresh. And the biggest thing, I'll go back and touch on this again, duplication of services. We, 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 we put ourselves in a situation where we are, to where we are, we're, we're, we're spending valuable taxpayer dollars to duplicate services that other communities are doing the exact same thing. And there's really no reason that we needed to do that. And if we can, if we could ever work out a package to where we could reduce or duplication of services, it takes more tax dollars, puts them back into the budget and helps increase the quality of life for every community.
And, and just so I'm, I'm hearing exactly what you're saying, you're not like any individual community's tax dollars. You're, you know, you're not just county tax dollar, like you're talking about collectively as a county, all of us in whatever municipality we live, you know, you're talking about the duplication wastes all of our tax dollars across the board.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, because, because every, everybody has, everybody has garbage pickup. Everybody has police. Everybody, and, and not, not everybody, but several people, several communities have, uh, have, have, have fire. Um, and, uh, and, 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 and fire's a little, fire's a little wonky. It's, you have to be, you have to be careful with that because of, because of the, the areas that you cover, the ACLS, um, um, guidelines and things of that nature. So you have to be a little careful with the way you handle fire and, and our firemen are, are, are great folks. I mean, I, I, and our volunteer people, they do, they do a great job. And, um, you know, I, I just, I just think that we've, we've got some opportunities out there that we can look at doing some things differently. And so that's, 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 that's kinda where I'm at with it.
All right. Um, well, uh, so you mentioned sewer stuff and, uh, sadly, uh, the sewer system has become near and dear to all of our hearts as we've gone through the rendering plant. Um, and, uh, never thought I'd, I'd be so anxious or so excited to have people out running around taking pictures of, of sewage overflows, which if you see any sewage overflows, um, then, uh, make sure you get some pictures, some video and get them sent over to Coosa Riverkeeper. Um, so we can keep getting all that stuff documented. That, that fight is not done. Um, we do have, uh, you know, a, a, a suit, um, for violation of Clean Water Act. Um, so that takes us into the, the infrastructure discussion as a whole. Um, and, you know, and, and I've said again and again, you know, not, not trying to completely rain on Gadsden's parade or anyone here. I think, you know, infrastructure failings is something that's a symptom countrywide. Um, that I think a, a lot of folks are, are dealing with. Um, but, uh, I mean, at least in a lot of places I've been, um, you know, we've, we've neglected, you know, some of that stuff. So what are your thoughts on the current state infrastructure? Um, you know, where, where do we need to go and, and how are we, you know, preparing the infrastructure for the future? For, um, you know, the, the business development, the business growth, you know, hopefully, you know, new people coming into the area and all that kinda stuff. Um, thoughts, thoughts on infrastructure?
Okay. Well, when you talk about infrastructure from a county standpoint, you talk about roads and bridges. That's, that's our, that's our main focus. That's, that's, that's why we're here. That's why, from a county standpoint, that's why the county commission exists. Um, is primarily for road and bridge construction and maintenance. Um, so as far as infrastructure and keeping infrastructure in place, um, what we need to do, my, my personal opinion is to focus on making sure that our infrastructure that we, and our highways and byways are, is kept to the best ability that it can be. Most community, I'm, I'm sorry, most businesses don't require infrastructure, um, placement until they actually come into town, place their buildings and then you run infrastructure. It'd be the same thing as like we went down to the mega site and ran a water line right in the middle of the field and parked it. It'd be the same situation. You don't do that. You wait until that takes place. So what we need to do is we need to prepare our infrastructure for doing that. Now, how do you do that? It's called dollars. And under, and, and, and let me just say this, and I, and I'm, I'm, I'm going, I'm going to, I'm going to give a, a kudos to every county commissioner that has ever served since the consent decree went into place. Under the current, I mean, this, uh, under the current county sharing.
And guys, we, we, I learned about this the other day and, and I was not educated on this. So li- listen, this, this is, this is good stuff.
Under the current county sharing structure, based on each county district, each district receives the exact same amount of money to pave roads with whether they have ten miles or two hundred miles. Now, I'm just gonna be just plain old Alabama here, that ain't right.
Yeah.
It ain't, it ain't right. Because what you do is you've got, you've got dollars tied up. And, and, and I, and, and like I said a minute ago, to every county commissioner that's ever served, they've dealt with this. And, uh, and I, and we, we've dealt with it, uh, and when we were, so you have to be clever. You have to be forward thinking in, in how you structure your, your, your bonds, how you structure your finances to be able to go and to be able to take, get the money that you need to pave roads with and do them as quick as you can. And it's, uh, it's very, very difficult. The biggest thing that we have got working right now, um, is the way the federal dollars come in and they, they, they drop into the state. And then the State Department of Transportation takes those dollars and they disperse those dollars based on, based on what their needs assessment is. And sometimes they don't have a needs assessment that, that focuses on Attlewell County as strongly as it does a Madison or Jefferson or a Montgomery. And so, so we have, we have to, we have to basically fight with the big boys sometimes. And to, to be able to get the money that we, that we need to be able to, to be able to move forward. So it's a very, it, it's a very difficult road. It really is. It's, it's not, it's not easy. And, uh, I know that really doesn't answer your question as far as, as far as what my belief on infrastructure is, but, but the, but the, the thing we have to do is it takes dollars to do it. We've gotta figure out how to get the most dollars out of the metropolitan planning organization. Then when, when, when they apply for funding through ALDOT and get that money here and to use that money to the best of our ability. And we're never gonna be able to pave roads to the satisfaction of everybody. Um, and unfortunately, that's, that's not gonna happen and I, I wish it could, but it's, but it's not. And, uh, so we're, we're gonna have to deal with what we've, the hand we've been dealt and we're gonna have to work on the best, the best way that we can. But, um, but that, but that, that, that current, that current consent decree that we are under does put a, does put a noose around the neck of the county. From a county standpoint, it does. So that's just something we have to deal with. It's the hand we've been dealt and we just have to live with it right now at this particular time.
Well, and, and I will ask to go deeper into, to how that, that came to be. Um, you know, I, I think, uh, the, the simple answer is government is, is how that, that came to be. Um, and,
Stubbornness.
Yeah.
Stubbornness.
So, so, um, yeah, I encourage everybody, dig, dig a little deeper into that. Um, I'm sure if you, uh, corner him, um, somewhere or any of the other county commissioners, uh, reach out to them and, and, uh, kinda understand a little bit more, uh, you know, it's, it's easy to armchair quarterback as a citizen. Um, but, you know, and, and the only real experience I've got is, is from, you know, serving in the Navy. It, nothing frustrated me more than when you go, well, those dollars aren't for that. Those dollars are for this over there and we, we can't move those dollars around. And, you know, the, the way we, we tend to deal with, with, uh, money, um, it's, let's just say it's definitely not like what a small business owner does where you can very easily go, no, it makes more sense to spend the dollars over here than over here. And, and you're done and you make the decision to move on. So that was, um, uh, probably one of the reasons why I spent the last nine and a half years as a reservist and not on active duty, cause my blood pressure couldn't handle a lot of those things.
The one pot plan is the only plan that really works. You've, you've put it all in one pot and you use it as you need it.
Um, so, but we are, are stuck with, with what we've got. So I, I think, I mean, a- again, um, I mean, like you said, and, and, you know, if, if you aren't aware from, you know, as a, as a voter, um, and what is it really that the county commission does? Um, you know, the roads and bridges, um, that, that's a, that's a big piece of it. So, um, you're not necessarily jumping into the sewer system, um, or any of that kinda stuff. But it sounds like you're at least thinking about those things and, and trying to talk amongst, um, you know, other, the, the folks that can, can weigh in on that. So.
Well, it's, it's at some point, just to touch on that, at some point sewer, um, will be moved to the mega site. So it's something that we have to be, um, whether, whether, whether we are, whether we are citizens, whether employees, whether we are elected officials. If you're involved, if you're gonna be involved with the mega site in any way, shape, form or fashion, it's something you're gonna have to be knowledgeable about. Because at some point we're gonna, um, you're gonna have to know something about sewer.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, actually Danny, um, I, I think that's, that's worth, uh, worth chatting about here. So, uh, Danny Starnes saying, I heard dollars a lot.
Okay.
Um, where do they come from? Uh, you touched a little bit in, in general, but so where do the dollars come from? Um, and, and how do we increase the amount of dollars? Um, if you've got more specific insight. And I don't know, may, he may have dropped that question a, a little bit after you, 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 you touched on that a hair, a hair, but.
Sure. We can talk about it. Yeah, it's no problem. Excuse me. Um, the, the dollars that we have coming in currently fall under a, a structure set up by the federal courts. And, uh, again, I'm not gonna get into all the, all the rigmarole on that. Um, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about that. If you, if you wanna, if you, if you wanna be bored for half an hour, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about it. But, but it's, but it's the, it's, that's the structure that was set up under the federal court back years ago. And so we have the dollars that we have before us. As far as getting more dollars into it, what we would have to do would be budgetary constraints, control cost, things of that nature, which is something I can say I was proud that I was able to do that as a county commissioner. We, we were able to control dollars and, and, um, and I think the, um, I think the, the, the current commission has kept a lot of the, a lot of the movement in place and a lot of the policies in place that we had in place and they're able to continue to do that, which is great. And, uh, but, but, but bringing more dollars in, really it comes down to, um, it comes down to, to bonding and, and, um, and unfortunately taxes. And, uh, that's, that's the, that's the, how you get your hands on mostly, most of your dollars now. And, um, I know people are not, not thrilled about the gas tax. Um, I'm not thrilled about it myself. I, I drive for a living, so I pay it every time I pull up to the pump. But it just, um, it's just, it's just a necessary part of life that we, if you're gonna run on the road, you gotta pay for it.
Gotcha. So, um, so the majority of our road money is, you're saying that's federal money? Not, not state money? Well, I mean.
I can touch on that if you, if you like for me too. The, the, the federal decree gives X amount of dollars toward each district to pave roads with.
Gotcha.
So.
Okay. So then that's coming down from the federal.
That's coming down from the.
So basically the federal level's telling us how we, how we get to divvy up our money at, at the local level.
Uh, unfortunately, yes.
All right. Yeah. Um, yeah, we, we definitely, I, I know that there's, there's some partisan politics involved and all that kinda stuff. And, and as we've discussed, a lot of that, um, quite honestly, that doesn't end up mattering on, on how we, we get our roads, um, paved and, and get rid of potholes, but.
At the end of the day, people just wanna drive on a smooth road.
Yeah.
And, and, and I, and I don't blame them.
Um, so Danny, I, I hope that, that, um, and, and again, I, I, I encourage you, um, you know, reach out to them if, if you want some more insight or, or any of the, the county commissioners. I'm sure they can, can give you some more, more, more depth in, into all that. But, um, as with everything government, it's, it's not necessarily as simple, um, as it sounds. I would also assume that, uh, you know, when you talk about tax dollars, um, and, you know, that I've, I've seen some, some discussions online the last few days, talking about taxes and all that kinda stuff. And, you know, ultimately what's really gonna bring more dollars is you increase the number of dollars that are in Attlewell County. Um, meaning business growth, business development, higher paying salaries, higher paying jobs. Businesses at the mega site, um, you know, that's ultimately not, not trying to divvy up or, or, you know, change around the declining population that we have.
Right.
Um, you know, and, and so I hope people, I, I mean, we can get into a lot of different discussions, I think, on what we can do with the current structure, but I hope everybody doesn't lose focus of ultimately what's really gonna move the needle is we, we've gotta get a business environment, um, you know, that, that is, that is conducive. And we've gotta get businesses in here that are bigger dollar businesses that pay better. Um, so that the taxes don't hurt as much, I guess, um, you know, so.
In a situation like that, everybody is, everybody's paying their fair share. It just, it's just one of the things that we have to, that we have to work toward. But it's a, it's, it's not, it's not an easy task. It's not an easy task at all.
Um, all right. Sweet. Good. Danny, I'm, I'm glad, uh, glad we got you some, some answers there. All right. Uh, let's dive into, um, you, you, you touched on some first responder stuff. Um, it sounds like you, you've got some personal insights into, to some of the things that have been dealt with, with, uh, uh, law enforcement in particular, um, around here. Um, so, you know, the first responder aspect of, of kinda what we're talking about really, um, had very little to do with the rendering plant other than we just had so many people in the community talking and paying attention and this issue came up and, you know, hey, we're, you know, Gadsden paying ten dollars and thirty-eight cents to somebody to fight fires and, um, you know, you can go down to Buc-E's apparently and get fifteen, seventeen dollars an hour, you know, as an associate helping probably clean the place. So.
Right.
Um, and, and then we've heard over and over again, um, and, and maybe some haven't, if you're, you're not aware of this. Um, you know, we're struggling, um, you know, as a, as a community and, and particularly at, you know, Gadsden is struggling on, on barely meeting the needs of the basic requirements for firefighting. Um, and, and so where does that fit in from our perspective? It fits in because, you know, you've got to have a certain level of, of obviously safety from a law enforcement standpoint, but, but ultimately I'd just say peace of mind as citizens in a community that when you pick up the phone, when, when the, 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 the really bad stuff happens, that somebody's gonna show up. And right now we're, we're in a situation, um, you know, particular to the rendering plant, the, the airport, um, firehouse gets shut down on a regular basis because they can't, they can't man, um, the, the house. So what are your, your thoughts? And, and I realize, and I hope everybody, you know, kinda understands, obviously you're, um, the county commission is, is, is much more limited in terms of how you can directly impact, you know, like particularly issues with the Gadsden, you know, police department, fire department. Um, but I'd, I'd like, what, what are your, your perspectives on, on some of those, those issues with the, the first responders?
The first responders and, and I, 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 let me back up at the very beginning here and say, I said something about the fireman a minute ago. I do not wanna leave all our police people and our dispatchers. Okay. They, they do a jam up job also. So, um, and so I, I, I make sure I get that, make sure you get all, all those folks in there. Cause I, I don't, I don't wanna just, I don't wanna disparage them at all. Uh, I love all our first responders, our ambulance services, our EMT folks. Every, everybody, everybody that works. They, they, folks, they put their, they put their, their integrity and their lives on the line every day. And, and, and like, and where police put their lives on the line, literally, um, on the line, you have EMTs and paramedics that do it. They put their license on the line and, and with, and along with that license could be, um, a wrong move that could cause them great problems.
Right.
And so, and so they, so they're out there every day doing that. Now, as far as retention, uh, yeah, you're right. We don't really have a lot of involvement with that. But let me just say this, um, retention is something that is a, going on all over this country and it's not just in the public sector. It's in the private sector as well. That is one of the biggest, I, I looked this up to make sure I was right about this.
Okay.
And I was filling out these questions. It is one of the biggest budgetary, uh, items that are on budgets in corporations across this country right now is retention. Because train, they're training and training and training and then losing and losing and losing. And so we've, and, and it is a huge issue right now that we're dealing with. As far as, as far as keeping people, retaining them, um, I think it goes far beyond just to pay. I think it goes far beyond just to pay a wage. I think I think it goes, I think it goes to, it goes to time off, it goes to family time, it goes to insurance, it go, it goes to providing them what they need to make a living. And Michael, I'll be honest with you, I think the biggest reason from a recruitment and retention standpoint, I don't know, because I heard Mr. Butler say yesterday, when he was doing his interview or whenever it was, that it's a calling. That these people, it's a calling on their life. And I believe that, but I believe where we're at right now, because of the current environment we're in in this country, people are not joining the ranks of fire and police because of lack of respect for the position. And I believe that more so than I do that that the wage has anything to do with it, because it's a calling on your life. A lot of times, you know, you know what it pays when you when you get into it. So you get into it because you want to do it. Now, do you do you want to make more money? Sure, everybody does. But but it's a calling on your life. But the lack of respect for our for our first responders now in in every aspect, that's the thing that serves me the most, because we we don't have a lack of, we we don't have the respect for our first responders that we used to have. When you, when you, when you see these, you see people spitting in the face of our police officers, people shooting our firemen whenever they're they they place a fake call to to a residence, they drive up in there and our firemen are shot at. It's it's just, it's it's insane, the 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 way our, the way our world is, people don't have, and people, the people have lost respect for themselves. And and when they do that, and I I'm not trying to preach, but
Right.
but but when people lose respect for themselves, they lose respect for everybody else around them. And that's, and 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 I think to a large degree, from a recruitment standpoint and from a retention standpoint, that is at least one aspect of what we're dealing with right now.
Okay. Yeah, well, I know, I mean, I I would definitely say, you know, again, as a as a military guy, that's something I've seen change over over 20 years, retention. As I saw all my peers, a lot of guys getting out, particularly in aviation, everybody was curious that yeah, you can go get paid more to go fly in airlines, and and the military started throwing a lot of money at fighter pilots. And I mean, fighter pilots, they're doing absolutely what they love to do. You know, they watch Top Gun and and they're getting, you know, they're getting to do it. And then it comes down to culture and the way you're treated and and the way. And yeah, so but that's, all right, well, that's, that's, that's good insight. And again, I know that there's you know, limitations, it's not like you can allocate funds from the county to pay Gadsden firefighters or or anything like that. But at least a good perspective on on as part of the overall county leadership, which is really kind of why I'm asking that question to to you guys. You know, and you know, the collaborative drug task force you you were you were involved in. Now, that was at the Rainbow City level? When you were involved with that?
They went around and visited each city hall.
Okay.
And and this, this is when, and and bless their hearts, there's God rest their souls, a lot of people that are involved that aren't with us anymore. And so the people that were, the the two people really that were instrumental in making that happen are with us anymore. And but they but they went around and 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 made the proposals to the to the cities and and were able to put it together. And it was, it was really neat to watch it, to watch the way that it formed and came together. And like I said, here it is, you know, that was in 2004, here we are almost 20 years later, and it's still, it's still going strong. And I'm, I was, I was, I was, I'm proud to say that that I got to see that happen, really am.
Cool. All right. All right. So the next topic that we'll jump into that that again is is not necessarily. Well, actually, it's it's kind of, I I mean, it is part of the rendering part, you know, the rendering discussion, the aspect of education. You know, I I will say, I mean, maybe I was the only one in the entire community that didn't realize, you know, how much industries and businesses really look at education systems when they're thinking about locating in in places. And that's a lot of the aspect that that I'm looking at at education and asking the questions and trying to get smarter on on the education system that we have here. But you know, in general, what are your thoughts on the education system issues that we have here in the community? And and what, if anything, from a county commissioner side of things, can you? What would you like to be able to do?
The the gentleman that runs the career tech facility here, Mark Stansel, Mark and I went to school together. He's a real good friend of mine, and I was able to have involvement with Mark for several years as as I was on county commission. And so that was, that was a very eye opening, because to be able to see what they were doing and 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 Mark was very interested in and and in moving people forward. And I I really believe the pandemic exposed a lot of holes in our in our education issues and 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 to and to their credit, our our superintendent and our teachers and our our staffs at at the at the city level and at the county level, both city levels and county level, plugged those holes tremendously. They did a yeoman's job with very limited resources and really with very little knowledge about what they were doing, because this this literally was being exposed to them as it was exposed to us. And I think what it did, and and I think that's the reason you're seeing such a pushdown in Montgomery for this to happen, it it further reiterated the point that we have to have an active broadband network throughout our community. And you have to have that not just for education, for our children, but you have to have it for education, for our workers. People just don't, businesses have reached a point now, they just can't afford to do the traveling and moving people to 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 conferences and things of that nature. A lot of this stuff is done over online now. And and there's several different community businesses that they have apprenticeships, and they have internships, that these these students can come in and they can work, and they can learn the business. And it's, it's something that if we don't, if we don't maintain our education system through the high school and the college level, and I think Gadsden State is doing a great job with what they're what they're doing. But 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 I will say this, they they want to do more. And and I and I'll and I'll say this, they need to do more, and they want to do more. I'm not, I'm not trying to disparage them. They they want to do more.
Right.
Yeah, just they wants to be more involved in what they what they have going on. And and I and I give them, I give them kudos for that. But.
And I I think, in fact, they've they've got some programs that are in some, some of the surrounding counties that aren't really in Etowah County, and it's not because of them, it's it's because of of.
Most of it's funding and and just in 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 space and, you know, just not having the space to do it. So of course, you can create that space for new buildings, but there again, that goes back to dollars.
Right, right.
And so that's, but that's, that's my, my, my belief on the, on the, on the education system. We have got to maintain our education system. And the and the biggest thing is this for me. And and I I was, I was a, I was a two year college guy and then went on and did my thing. And did my thing in life. But we've got to get away from this idea that you have to go to college four years to be able to be successful in life. There is career tech opportunities out there at the high school level and the technical level that pay very well. And you can make as much or more in a in a trade as you can in a in a professional type job. So so it's, it's very, it it's it's very important, we don't need to disparage our children, or we don't need to put a a mark on them thinking that they need to go to college for four years in order to do this. College isn't for everybody.
Right.
It's not. And so some people, some people need to do military like you did. They 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 need that, they need that structure in their lives. And if they do, then then so be it. But 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 they need to find out where their niche is and move toward that. And I think we need to help them do that. Our counselors and our our life coaches that we have in the schools, they need, they need to help these kids, and they are, I'm not, not knocking them, they are helping.
Right.
They're helping them to guide them to their star and and where where their shining star is to where they know they can plug in.
Yeah.
And so, and so the education system is incredibly important at every level, not just, not just the, not 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 just the prep level.
And I I think that that's kind of a perfect segue in into the discussion of of ultimately, business development around here. You know, to to your point of not everybody, not everybody needs to go off to college, you know, and we don't necessarily need to end up with a community. I mean, certainly right now, to try and take an aim at, that we're going to have a whole bunch of white collar, you know, jobs that require, you know, high level degrees. You know, that that's just in my opinion, that that's a pretty that that's a tall order. I mean, you go up to Huntsville, you know, and and a community like Huntsville, where you've got more PhDs per capita than pretty much any other community in the nation. Well, there's a reason that that happened, and it had to do with, you know, the nuclear arms race and Warner Von Braun and like building missiles and and being able to kill the 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 Ruskie's, so to speak. You know, and that played a huge influence. And and so, you know, to to compete at that level, there's a lot of really smart folks up there. But what we've got to do here, you know, in preparing that workforce, you know, I I think one of the reasons, and and this is something that definitely came up with the discussion with the rendering plan, is jobs, 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 we need more jobs. And number one, we learned very quickly in doing a mild amount of research, there's thousands of open jobs in Etowah County, that they just don't pay very much. And so you prepare a workforce, and you know, you mentioned, you know, even on the technical trades, you know, becoming skilled labor. Well, how many, how many great opportunities are there for you to stick around in Etowah County? So how do we develop, you know, a a business environment? And you know, the other aspect of this that I've talked about multiple times, you know, the number of business owners that I've heard, their story is something along the lines of I succeeded in my business despite the support or really despite some of the pushback from a local government attitude, treatment, you know, and and clearly, we've seen some businesses that have moved out to other, you know, whether it's out to Rainbow City or or other areas, or whole other counties. You know, it it seems odd to me that that I've talked to so many people that, you know, don't want to really build a business here, that don't want to grow their business here. You know, and and then we have all this discussion about recruiting someone else to come in and build their business here. And and that, my brain, I'm just, I guess, a simple minded kind of guy. But, you know, that seems like an issue to me. So what are your thoughts on on ultimately, all of these things come together? Again, there's a ton of, a a ton of issues that that are all very important in our community. And I don't mean to, you know, dismiss any any issues. But I I kind of feel like, particularly again, from the perspective of coming out of the rendering plant, if we don't get focused as a community on really moving the needle, on growing household incomes across the board in Etowah County, there really isn't much else worth talking about. You know, there's not a whole lot else we can do. Back to what you said, money. Got to have money to do, you know, to do things. If we want to have great paved roads, if we want to build beautiful parks, I mean, all this kind of stuff requires dollars. So what are your thoughts on, you know, how do we move forward? How do we create a a better in business environment? How do we, you know, encourage business growth from within? And and certainly, we we need to attract, you know, new dollars in here, new businesses as well. So.
Well, I think the 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 main thing that we need to focus on right now is we need to, we need to pull away from where we've where we've been, let me just say it that way. And 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 I don't want to, I don't want to offend anybody when I say this, but our steel plant was here, Goodyear was here, and they they produced great income for this community. But folks, Goodyear and the steel plant aren't here anymore. We have to move forward based on where we are today and moving forward to 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 create an environment for our children. You know, I I don't want my children to have to pack up and move halfway across the country to be able to support their family.
Right.
And and I don't think anybody wants, especially if you have grandchildren, you don't want that. You don't want, you don't want to have to have to hop on a plane to go see your grandchildren all the time. As far as creating an environment to do that, let me tell you what Congressman Adorhold told me one time. We have got to work together as a team. And this goes back to the very first thing that we talked about, or one of the first things we talked about. We've got to work together as a team. Businesses that don't see communities working together usually shy away from those communities. They they they'll shy away from that area. They, you've got to work together as a team to bring in business and 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 they and I and I really think that is going to be the necessary first step. And it goes back to what we've been talking about off and on the entire time that we've been having discussion. We've got to be able to to work together as a as as a unified group and 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 not and not look at just this piece of the pile or or this sex, this this section of the county. But look together and say, you know, what can we do for the benefit of this entire county that's going to bring in people and and jobs and quality of life? And that's the biggest thing, is quality of life, to increase our quality of life for our families.
Right.
Well, Michael, our population hasn't increased very much over the, over the last, over the last two census, it hadn't increased very much, had decreased any. So basically, people are just kind of stagnant, they're kind of sitting still. And it's it's time for us to, it's time for us to take the, take the reins and 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 move forward. And I and I, let me just touch real back quick on the mega site. That was our entire idea for that, but was to bring a large industry in here, because if you bring in a large industry, you you'll have first, or second, and third tier departments that build, that that would build into smaller industrial parks here in this county.
Right.
And basically, everybody would benefit. And and that that was our, that was our dream, that was, and and is, that that is still my dream, even even if I don't win this election, I'm a private citizen. That is my dream, is even as a citizen
Right.
to see that happen, because that provides good paying jobs for everyone. And when you do, when you provide good paying jobs, it improves quality of life, it improves self-respect.
Right.
It 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 improves everything that 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 you have in your life. It just, it just, it gives you, it gives you something you can work toward.
Well, and and I, you you bring up a a an aspect of of, you know, as I run through my head, what what I I I said about, you know, recruiting jobs and particularly as a sit, you know, you know, I don't want anybody to misperceive what I'm saying, that, you know, if if you were part of trying to bring the mega site to fruition, I'm not saying we shouldn't try to recruit, you know, I'm just pointing out. And I know a lot of the business environment that exists here and the issues that we we have here that I'm saying are are way beyond the control of of, you know, even the county commissioners and 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 what can be done. So I definitely, I just want to make sure that that everybody kind of understands that. I don't want want hate comments that I'm I'm dogging on people that are trying to recruit businesses in here. That's not at all, not at all what I'm, not at all what I'm saying. Understand the point that I am trying to to make. You know, it's just telling that that you've got, you know, business owners here that aren't necessarily super happy or guys that would be business owners but aren't willing to, because it's just not a, not a great, great place. And I think I I just want to make sure I I made that clear. You know, so the the mega site and that concept, you know, it is well, I mean, at this point, it's it's there, and we need to get something on there, and we need to make it work. And, you know, it it can be a a great opportunity to 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 bring some some pretty, I guess, let's say, life changing opportunities in into the community. All right, uh, so I did, I did forget, you mentioned something about the land assessment when we talk about positive business environment and doing a land assessments of all the potential sites and stuff like that. Could you touch on, I mean, is that not something that's kind of already readily available, you know, across the county?
I think I think it's something that's, I think it's something that's available. I think it's something that's available in certain places.
Okay.
Okay, I I I think the land assessment that I that I speak of needs to be done for the entire county.
Okay.
And even 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 in maybe some of the rural areas that that if that, if that particular industry fit in that area, that needs to be considered for that. You've got people out there, you've got second gen, third generation people that have got farms that 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 might be interested in selling. And I think I think it it comes to a, it comes to a, to a situation, you have to do a a progressive, thorough, exhaustive land assessment to know what you've got out there. We've got a lot of land here, and there and there's a lot of opportunities. And 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 I personally believe we've got a workforce here. I really do. I think I think we've got room for improvement, but I think we have a workforce.
I mean, I I think I think the number of folks that that get up every day and drive down to Lincoln and go to work at Honda is is good proof that we've got. I mean, I, I think, I think the number of folks that, that get up every day and drive down to Lincoln and go to work at Honda is, is good proof that we've got, we've got some workforce in this, in this area.
It's proof. So, so we've, we've got it, we've got a workforce here. I mean, you've got, you've got the, the guys and the, and the ladies that work Goodyear that, that, that would, that would love to be able to plug back in somewhere. I know several of them that, um, a couple of guys that I know that they were, they were very fortunate. They, they had side businesses and they've been able to grow those side businesses into businesses that they can support their families. But there's a lot of guys and ladies out there that didn't have that opportunity and they need to be working. And, and I'll be honest with you, it is incumbent on our leaders. And if I'm fortunate enough to be one of those leaders, it will be incumbent on me. I will take that mantle. It's in, it's incumbent on our leaders to seek out the way to improve the quality of life and to raise the, the standard of living for our community. That's what people elect us for. That's one of the reasons.
Alright, uh, let's see, wow, alright, we've been gone for, for, uh, quite a while. Um, so I think there was one question in here, um, that I, I saw and I, I, I kinda wanna clarify. I'm not a hundred percent sure what, when I'm reading this question, uh, Jeremy, um, let me get this up on the screen, said, basically we need a board of eight to ten people to get together to tell the commission what needs to be done countywide is what I gathered. I, I, um, I'm a, I'm, I'm gonna, I, that was not what I was hearing when, when we were talking about, you know, how to, how to do better collaboration, how to develop the master plan. Um, so I don't know if, if that's, um, and, and I, it, that's, that's not what you were.
Oh, no.
You were getting that.
No, when I say, when I, when I say eight to ten people, I'm talking about putting together a group of, of, of your, your, your major communities and then your smaller communities, keeping at least four or five on there to rotate them out on a regular basis. Keep a commissioner on there to where you have representation there, but, but, but not necessarily to, to tell the commission what's going on or what's not going on or what needs to be done. The, quite honestly, the county commission has their, they have their own job that they have to do. And they, and, and, and so they have to move forward with, with what is charged to them by state law. So it's not, it's, it's, it's not just that they're out here just doing what they wanna do. I mean, they, they, they have, they have certain laws they have to follow by state law, they're charged with certain responsibilities.
Well, and, and I think that, that, that plays into the, the conversation, um, and, and we don't necessarily need to have a, a, a big, long discussion about, you know, the IDA, um, and that's back to the government structure, um, and industrial recruitment. But, you know, as a, as a concept of how to get after a master plan, whether what you're suggesting ends up, you know, hey, that, that group is what really develops some sort of master plan, like. And when, when we say master plan, I recognize that, I mean, there's different ways to tackle that. Whether, and I think you mentioned kind of a master plan or coordination on smaller chunks. Um, but, you know, certainly what I am proposing, uh, that we, we need to acknowledge. Um, and I think what I'm hearing you say is we've got a collaborative entity of some kind, um, whether that's that board or it's an actual, you know, docu, like, as a group, we've got to get together to have some representation, to talk about where we want to go as a community. And that, I mean, what comes out of that should inform the county commission, the city council of Gadsden, the chamber of commerce, the tourism board, I mean, like, is, is that kinda, I mean, in, in some, some way? I mean, we've got to, to figure out.
I wouldn't even go as far to say this, and this, and this maybe, I, and I, I may have, I may have misspoke when I said something a minute ago about, about putting different people there. We might need, and this, and I'm, I'm talking literally off the top of my head right now.
Okay.
But we might need to consider giving position on a board of some type to where there's an appointee to that board from the city, not necessarily an elected official. So that, and that, and, and that, and that way you keep the politics out of it.
Right.
You know, or, or, or county or, or whatever, to where you'd have an appointee to their, that would report back to their respective, um, a pointer and, and could give them the details of what's going on.
Well.
And that's literally off the top of my head. I, I don't, I don't know that would work or not.
I think the.
But, but we're spitballing, but at the same time, I think that's what it's gonna, it's gonna take that to get where we need to be. We're gonna have to throw some ideas out there and see what sticks.
And I, I think, you know, that to, to, to what, what we're trying to get after with what we're doing here is, is the discussion. Um, and we need people that are willing to, to discuss, um, you know, and, uh, and, and, and basically the same old, same old, whatever we've been doing to the, to the discussion about our population and, you know, lack of growth and, and, you know, whatever we've been doing, perhaps we need to consider, is it all working or not working? Um, you know, and, and now seems like a great time as we've come out of the rendering plant, uh, a great time for us to really reflect as a community on, on where we sit and then where do we wanna go, you know? Um, and so, yeah, Jeremy, I, I, I hope that, that kinda, um, I just wanted to, to, to make sure, um, that was not what I was hearing. Of course, you know, it's always, it's always difficult in reading a comment on, on a live to really fully understand what you're getting at in question, but I hope that, that kinda brings a little more, um, perspective. I, I did not, I did not get that that was what was necessarily being, obviously all these entities. I mean, you've still gotta do your, your stuff, but we, we've got to figure out a way.
Oh, sure.
That, that, that we, we can collaborate so that the, the county commission's not doing its thing. The city of Itaau is not doing its thing, the Rainbow City's not doing its thing, the city of Gadsden is not doing its thing. And hoping that it all just magically comes together in an area where we all live right next door to each other.
Well, we're still charged with responsibility by law to do certain things inside our municipalities or our communities, as long as we maintain those charters and we, and we stay, we stay, but I'll, I'll tell you two things. Number one, Einstein said, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over expecting a different result. And Abraham Lincoln said, those that do not learn from the past will be forced to repeat it. And I think those, I think those two things
Yep.
needs to be a guiding light for us to move us forward.
Well, with that, I think that's a good, uh, um, I think that's a good close. Um, so, uh, again, I appreciate you coming in and sitting down and, and taking the time. Um, I know all you guys are busy and I don't, at, by any stretch of imagination, wanna waste y'all's time. Um, and, uh, hopefully the people, uh, get something out of it. Um, so where, where can folks go follow you, uh, get more information, see more about what you're, you're, you're putting out?
Our Facebook page is Jeff Overstreet, Etowah County Commission District Four. You can pick us up there, uh, you can go to the advanced Etowah side and you got the information there. My phone number's on there, you can give me a call. And, um, let me just, let me just encourage everybody, um, May twenty fourth is just right around the corner. Folks, exercise your privilege to vote. And you'll always, you'll never hear me say exercise your right, it's exercise your privilege. If you don't keep your privilege to vote, one day it could be taken away. Ex- voting is not a right, it's a privilege. And it could be, we could lose it one day. I hope that you will consider me for county commission, but the important thing is go vote, go vote.
And May twenty fourth is extra important, um, as a primary because all these guys that are gonna be voted on in the primaries, that basically is the vote for, uh, for Etowah. Um, for all those positions. So whoever wins the primaries across the board, uh, they'll be the only names on the ballot when it comes time to, to actually vote. So that's, that's a key point, um, to, to get out there on, uh, on May twenty fourth. So, um, well, guys, uh, thank y'all so much on a Friday evening now. Um, we, we went a little long. I, I enjoyed the conversation. I hope, uh, you guys, uh, get something out of it. Um, this is the kinda stuff that we need to be doing as a community. Um, you know, some of it can be uncomfortable if we disagree with things, uh, but that's the whole point. That's the whole way, uh, democracy and the way a community works together. Um, you know, uh, e- even, even churches have their own politics.
This is true. Been, so, been there too, so this is true.
So guys, um, have a, a great, uh, great Friday, um, if you're watching this today. Um, but, uh, whenever you're, you're seeing it, again, I encourage you, head to advancedetowah.com. Uh, we've got who's running, uh, go to election twenty-two and, uh, you can find out, uh, more information about all the candidates. As Jeff said, all the links and, uh, and everything to all these guys, um, please, please, please. If, if all you've got's twelve minutes, I'm trying to make it so that twelve minutes you'll get something out of. Uh, certainly I'd encourage you to, to invest more time. Um, this is a pivotal, pivotal moment, uh, in, in the future of our community. Um, and we owe it to ourselves as citizens to get as smart as we can with the time that we have available to understand the issues that we've got going on, to make decisions on, on who we're gonna put, uh, and trust with, with leading our community. So, um, again, ultimately the leadership comes down to us as citizens and there's hard work that's involved in that. So, uh, I hope, I hope you're willing to do it with us. Um, we did it together for the Renner and Plant and we've got to, to keep, we've got to keep pressing, um, to, uh, to change the trajectory of our community. So, thank you guys. Y'all have a great night and we will, uh, talk to you on the next one.